Okay.
You're working.
Yeah.
We get.
We're stuck straight this out.
Working.
You're getting all these kinds of votes.
All right. Back in business.
Oh.
There you go. All right, so item four, assistance addressing the councils. Anyone who'd like to address the council tonight? Okay. We'll move on to item five, approval of the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of item A, approval of the bills, item B, approval of the December nineteenth, twenty-three city council, city minutes, and item C, approval of three-two liquor license for the Arlington A's baseball team. Someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Is, is there actually three-two liquor licenses?
There is. Reasonable, the A's are still under three-two, even though the state passed a law allowing them to have full, they're on a school grounds. That's why they still can only have a three-two right now.
But you can't buy three-two.
Well, that's worth, yeah, I know.
Okay.
All right, motion by Councilmember Meyer, seconded by Councilmember Ling to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, item six, property at two-three-three-one-five, State Highway Five, Paul Peeper. And Paul, just so you know, just discussing it with the city administrators, thank you that while we welcome your comments and to the council, being that we're still, you know, with the litigation, that it's just a fight in council that we should not comment, being it's still in litigation. So, let's see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, everybody. If you know, I reside in Cologne, Minnesota, owner of JP Property Holdings and Peeps Repair, where we do truck repair. We do truck repair, farm equipment repair, we're a trucking company and material sales, and been business in this town since two thousand and ten. We're in the Iowa Business District. I don't know where to really start. I've just got a couple of thoughts or words. Leadership, trust, support, respect, integrity, and failure. On March twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, the city council meeting, our mayor spoke, and he had these quotes, which I thought very, very good quotes. Events of the past has created mistrust in the city government. How to create a new vision for the city, have an opportunity on how to rethink and how we do things, learn from our mistakes, come together with an open line of communication with the willingness to resolve our differences. As a council, we need to learn how to work together, focus on what's best for the community. There'll be times we may disagree, we will make mistakes. This is how we handle our disagreements. Like I said, this is a quote from the mayor, very good quotes. I asked everyone, did the city achieve these goals? I'm finding it really hard, because it seems like it's a broken record that kind of happens. They just keep skipping back with the issues. Like I said, some of this is repeat, like I said, August fifth, twenty-twenty-one. It was discussed about me selling, selling and screening black dirt, which was deemed that that was approved usage of the property. Phil Magus, Amy Batch, and Brandon Brinkman all had said that that was approved usage of the property. And then at that meeting, it was basically, it was discussed of either changing the zoning and the wording to allow like repair facilities like myself and other businesses to do this without a conditional use, basically reboarding or zoning the businesses other than just myself. We're zone myself, you know. After the meeting, we proposed amendment to my condition to use that Brad Kruger signed and dated until our facility to operate and grow, well knowing that we'd be selling black dirt and screening as a side venture. On September second, twenty-twenty-one, the planning zoning was approved without truly retail sales, which basically referred to my dirt sales. In my opinion, that was discussed with Phil. On September seventh, the city council meeting resolution was made by Amy Batch, seconded by John Thomas, and in favor Matt Sharpe and Craig Bus at that city council meeting in twenty-twenty-one. Nothing was mentioned for black dirt sales, because it was approved usage of the property without a conditional use. And why would that be put into your CUP? Or, you know, and where was the recording in the city that was approved for future use? So, back in July twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-three this year, I got a letter from the city, sent to the wrong address, which is in the address that's on the building for anything that had to do with the city, of the need to stop and selling screening black dirt. At that time, I went to the office and talked to Jessica and Michael, and they couldn't explain what changed. They were just told I could not screen. So, I was looking up on subdivision seven and violations in the A two, it states for conditional uses. This is a complaint upon, upon a complaint by all the county administration alleging noncompliance with the terms of the CUP. The zoning office shall notify the permit holder in writing of the alleged violation. The notice shall contain the nature of the violation, the facts that supported, and the conclusion that a violation exists. Also remember, this is like a broken record. Let's get back in twenty-twenty-one on the same complaint. So, the city, that ended up being an approved usage of the property. So, if there was a violation that actually happened or accused under the ordinance number two-eighty-four in section fifteen, conditional use permits, subdivision seven, A dash three. The zoning administration shall provide written notice to the permit holder devising that CUP may be revoked upon conclusion of a public hearing by the planning and zoning, and upon review of the findings in fact by the city council. The planning commission shall hold a public hearing, file the notice in hearings as may be amended. The planning commission shall prepare written findings of fact, set forth its findings and recommendations to the city council. The planning commission may recommend that there be a determination that there is no violation, just like back there was in August of twenty-twenty-one. The city council shall accept or modify or reject the recommendations of the planning and zoning commission by resolution and shall prepare written findings of fact for treason. So, on the November second, twenty-twenty-three, the planning and zoning meeting, item number five, said Highway Five complaint. What was this about? Since the meetings are not recorded, can they be recorded? You know, the planning and zoning, and there's no minutes recorded like there used to be at various times about the meetings. And can they be, you know, public knowledge? But from what I had heard, my property was under discussion. No letter of that there would be discussion on my property that was supposed to be sent like discussed earlier. Never got a phone call, nothing, no notice, nothing. But planning and zoning decided to find me somehow without council approval. So, on October twenty-fourth, I got, there's a police report stating that I was sifting dirt, but no mechanics on the screener was ran. Only sound of a bucket was used, and charges with noise and nuisance and public nuisance annoying, endanger safety. So, when I came up with the city code six-point-zero-four-B, it's noise nuisance. Any person who causes or allows loud music or other disturbing noises to originate from his property in a reasonable manner or at reasonable hours, which would tend to alarm or disturb the peace and tranquility of his neighbors, shall be guilty of creating or maintaining a public nuisance. Noise or music sources located in the yard or other portions of the property outside of the structure of the person's property. After the hours of twelve a.m., midnight shall be considered crime patient for a public nuisance. This provision shall also apply to any noise or music sounds located in a motor vehicle, whether private or public property. It shall be considered crime patient of public nuisance if music. So, then there's the public nuisance annoying injury, endanger, and safety, that's six-oh-nine-point-seventy-four. Whoever by an act of failure to perform a legal duty intentionally does any of the following is guilty of maintaining a public nuisance. Contains or permits a condition which is adversely annoys and injured or endangers the safety, health, morals, comfort, air, recos of any considerable number of members of the public, or interferes with, obstructs, or renders a dangerous passage. So, my question is, what protects a business in order to operate, just like running a skid steer, that is designed with a certain decimal level restrictions? There should be a measurement level of the offense. Like I said, I was doing what I was approved to do with my property, that is in the Iowa Business District. So, in summary, and this is my opinion, I could be wrong, but this is what happened. A business goes through the proper steps for approved use of a property. The city didn't record it, property comes back, is persuaded that it's not, takes action to find a business on something that was approved, and doesn't take the steps to correct it in a manner using their own protocol. So, as far as my CUP, I will be back. I am working with attorney to rewrite my CUP. Have to protect myself, and I also have to protect the city, you know. That's where I failed. I never hired attorney to protect myself. As far as the noise charges, I am working on it, possibly in attorney, to resolve it. That just kind of unfolded here last day. So, I'm asking all of you to do what's right for the whole community, not just one party, because we are available asset to the community.
Thank you. I will say one thing. Jess and I, or city administrator, have been looking into this. I've looked at the zoning. We are doing, we are looking at possible changes to that zone, but we're right now, it's way in the beginning stages. And just looking at ways to make sure that everybody's protected in that area. So, I mean, I've been looking into that, reading the zoning codes, making sure that we are correct for that area. And actually, I'm looking at a lot of, lot of areas, just make sure we're right across the board.
Because I think this kind of got, this got handled, this didn't get handled properly. I'll admit, I did, wasn't proactive when I got that letter in the early summer. Should've came right here, sat in front of you, brought this to your attention. But why didn't I do it? Because I went through it already. And I always have a neighbor. What's my next thing he's going to complain about? He's always trying to find something to push me up. It came from day one. And you're going to have those people in this town, no matter what, you know. You've got to respectful for them. I've always said that. I'm willing to work with it. And I proved it in the last meeting. I was willing to work with them with the text messages. Hey, they got an event. Okay, I won't try to operate anything. You know, that's respectful of the neighbors of anything, you know. I totally get, but a person still has to operate, you know. They're still think, like I said, we're a farming community. The world doesn't shut down at a certain time, you know. I mean, it's got to respectful to the people, you know. So, I appreciate your willing to work with us. You know, that's what's going to make this community a much better community, you know, us working together and not fighting each other.
Right. And just for your records, it should be, it's Shelley Batch or Michelle Batch, not Amy, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I just probably said.
Yeah, I know, I just. If you, just so you. Yeah, otherwise.
I could be wrong with some of this, but like I say, like the steps that there was to say that there is a complaint, you know, those were the steps that I found on your slip, so I'd say, you know, the proper steps. And I said, I'm willing to work with it, you know. I mean, we're going to grow. I mean, five years from now, ten years from now, things might change. I might have to make an amendment because we, you know, we're looking into a different business venture, you know. That's, you know, that's changed. It's hard to predict the future. You know, what you say you're going to do right now, you know, is different in five years or even one year from now. So.
Yes.
So, everything's changed now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. Move on. Item seven, fire department quote, Chief Martin Dooley.
Welcome. Can you even answer, Mayor, Council?
Hello, Doug.
Jess asked me if I could do my annual reports. I put that together, and then I also got a quote for air compressor for the firehouse. So, in twenty-twenty-three, we, fire department responded to seventy-two calls. In twenty-two, we did seventy-six. We mutuated ambulance with twenty-two of those calls. One of the three-day ambulance. Through up to year, our fire department has mutually, three different departments on seven calls. We received mutual aid from six departments, house fire we had earlier in spring. The fire department responded forty-two calls in the city of Arlington, nine in Arlington Township, two calls in Dryden, three calls in Green Island Township, two calls in Jessone, five in Kelso, one in Arlington Township. As of now, we are up to twenty-nine firefighters. Hopefully, it stays that way. We just put on five new firefighters. So, they're going through classes right now. So, hopefully by towards the end of spring, they should have them done. I've been going through the fee schedules with Jess a little bit. We're trying to get a little closer to the rest of the town, you know, on just fee lines or whatever. So, I put that together. I stopped in today, but she was going to kind of go through that with her. So. I started going through equipment up at the hall, just kind of see what we need to update or replace, and just kind of looking over the other one. In January, the department's going through their EMI refresher. Grant stuff, I did do a, they called power grant. We got new stop signs with that. We got lights on for like accidents at night in the fog and whatnot. We got a donation from Arlington Lions Club, dealer G P L, no fielder, places around town. They paid for some gloves, new Nomaxes, and the rest of our ski unit for the Ranger. We got that, I think around June or so this year, July, one number two. Last but not least, I'm requesting the council to move forward with, I'd like to buy an air compressor, line dryer, and an install kit. It's got oil changes and a three-year warranty with it for the trucks. I had to replace, they've got an onboard air compressor. I've had to replace two of the compressors since I've been chief. Well, naturally, Peeps did it for us, but one was the engine one, that was right around eighteen hundred dollars replaced. And the old tanker, that was, I believe, was like right around eight hundred dollars. So, I mean, that's almost a quarter of what I'm asking for for this. Pretty much, we put it together in the back room, set it up. We have air throughout the hall. We have an airline for each truck, which will then air up the trucks instead of using onboard compressors. There've been a few times, me or some of the guys went up to the hall, the airline comes off or something, the compressor were on all night, which tells me we're just going to wind up burning out another compressor that will have to change. So, kind of like to use the money we got from the state and quit air compressor up at the hall.
Okay.
So, any questions at all?
How much was the air compressor? What were you asking?
So, the air compressor, inline dryer, I installed a kit in a three-year warranty. You know, it's like seven thousand four sixty-six.
Right there's the quote, Jeff.
I'm looking, oh, there it is. Thank you.
Yep. I got it from Napa, so they're actually delivering it right to our front door and everything when it comes. So. And if there's any trouble or anything, he's right there with everything. So, really, we don't got to spend any time driving back and forth anywhere and making any phone calls since they're right up the street from us. So, and trying to keep business a little bit longer. So.
Motion? Do you need a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to buy the air compressor, the line dryer, the install kit, the line, everything that's included.
Okay, second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Meyer, seconded by Councilmember Thomas to approve the purchase of the compressor, line kit, and everything you need there. So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay. Next item, a bunch of resolutions, beginning of the year stuff for resolutions. Excuse me. We'll start with resolution one dash twenty-twenty-four. This is a resolution designating the Arlington State Bank as our official city depository. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce resolution one, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, second.
Second.
All right, resolution one dash twenty-twenty-four. This is a resolution designating the Arlington State Bank as our city depository. Introduced by Councilmember Meyer, seconded by Councilmember Thomas, vote by roll call. Councilmember Ling?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Matts?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Five in favor, none against, the resolution passes. All right. Resolution two dash twenty-twenty-four, this is a resolution authorizing signatures for authority for the city accounts. They include myself, Vice Mayor Dave Meyer, City Administrator Jessica Stanki, and Deputy Clerk, or Deputy City Clerk Lisa Tesh. Someone like to introduce?
I'll introduce resolution two, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, resolution two dash twenty-twenty-four, it's a resolution authorizing signature authority for city accounts. Introduced by Councilmember Thomas, seconded by Councilmember Lipton, vote by roll call again. Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ling?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Matts?
Yes.
Five in favor, none against, the resolution passes. All right. Resolution three dash twenty-twenty-four, this is a resolution designating the Arlington Enterprise as the official city newspaper. Someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce resolution three twenty-four for making the designated official city newspaper.
Okay, there's second.
I'll second it.
All right, resolution three dash twenty-twenty-four, introduced by Councilmember Matt, seconded by Councilmember Ling. This is a resolution designating the Arlington Enterprise as the official city newspaper, vote by roll call again. Councilmember Ling?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah.
Councilmember Matts?
Yes.
And Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Five in favor, none against, the resolution passes. All right, next one. Resolution four dash twenty-twenty-four, it's a resolution accepting a donation of a hundred and fifty dollars from Stephen Birch and James Fuller, memory of her parents. It goes to the Arlington Area Ambulance Service, Arlington Police Department, and Arlington Fire Department.
I'll make a motion to, for, to adopt resolution four dash twenty-twenty-four for the hundred and fifty dollar donation to the Arlington Ambulance Police Department and Fire Department.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, resolution four dash twenty-twenty-four, introduced by Councilmember Lipton, seconded by Councilmember Meyer. This is a resolution accepting a donation and designated use, vote by roll call again. Councilmember Ling?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Matts?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
In favor, none against, the resolution passes. All right, resolution five dash twenty-twenty-four, this is a resolution appointing the city administrator and authorizing the city of Arlington to enter into a contract with Jessica Stanki. We do this every year for our city administrator, so.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution five dash twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
All right, resolution five dash twenty-twenty-four, introduced by Councilmember Meyer, seconded by Councilmember Matts. A resolution appointing city administrator and authorizing the city of Arlington to enter into a contract with Jessica Stanki. Vote by roll call again. Councilmember Matts?
Yes.
Councilmember Ling?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Five in favor, none against, the resolution passes. Let's go through this and get to the next one. All right. Resolution six dash twenty-twenty-four, this is a resolution ratifying the mayor appointments and committees. Before we go on, I do have, we have three open positions right now, one on E D A and two on planning and zoning. So, if you know anybody that would like to get on these committees, have them contact the city office, fill out an application. The E D A is a six-year term, and the planning and zoning is two-year term. So, any Arlington resident can apply for consideration. Would somebody like to introduce the?
I'll introduce resolution six dash twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
Ratification of the mayor appointments to committees.
I'll second it.
All right, resolution six dash twenty-twenty-four, a resolution ratifying the mayor appointments and committees. Introduced by Councilmember Thomas, seconded by Councilmember Ling, vote by roll call again. Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ling?
Yes.
Councilmember Matts?
Yes.
And Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Five in favor, none against, the resolution passes. Okay. Okay. Resolution seven dash twenty-twenty-four, this is a resolution postponing the appointments of said committees. Basically, the cemetery events and parks in Sheik Tree until we, this will be for two months until we finalize what we're going to do with them. Someone like to introduce?
I'll introduce resolution seven, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
Second.
All right, resolution seven dash twenty-twenty-four, resolution postponing the appointments to said committees. Introduced by Councilmember Matt, seconded by Councilmember Thomas, vote by roll call again. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ling?
Yes.
And Councilmember Matts?
Yes.
Five in favor, none against, the resolution passes. All right. Resolution eight dash twenty-twenty-four, this is approval of the twenty-twenty-four city calendar.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution eight.
I'll second.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, resolution eight dash twenty-twenty-four, introduced by Councilmember Meyer, seconded by Councilmember Thomas. This is a resolution approving the twenty-twenty-four city calendar, vote by roll call again. Councilmember Matts?
Yes.
Councilmember Ling?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
And Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Five in favor, none against, the resolution passes. Okay. And then. All right, resolution nine dash twenty-twenty-four, this is a resolution adopting the twenty-twenty-four Arlington municipal budget.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution nine dash twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, second. Jeff? Okay. All right, resolution nine dash twenty-twenty-four, introduced by Councilmember Lipton, seconded by Councilmember Matts. This is a resolution adopting the twenty-twenty-four Arlington municipal budget, vote by roll call again. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Ling?
Yes.
Councilmember Matts?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
And Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Five in favor, none against, the resolution passes. I think that is the end of the resolutions. Okay. Item seventeen, people services report. Did y'all, that was written? Did y'all have a chance to review it? Any questions?
They're busy.
They are busy. Okay. And then our statement of funds. They are busy. So, that's as of November. All right, we do not have a city administrator update, so move on. Item twenty, miscellaneous business, Christmas lights. I put this on the agenda because, well, we've been discussing Christmas lights for three years now, two years since I've been on the council. It's been, you know, it's always brought up, but really, nothing gets done about it. I know a group was going to try to do some fundraising, but that didn't happen either. So, I've asked Jessica to see what the city can do, if the city can actually fundraise, and, and so that if we, you know, we start a campaign or whatever, and then we have a designated area that people can donate to these lights instead of, you know, instead of budgeting it.
I was going to ask, were any of them damaged in the hailstorms? Can we get that covered?
I'm not sure if any were or not. I think the hailstorm was in October, so they weren't up yet. Well, the ones in the building probably were.
They're around year-round.
They're around year-round, but some of those, if I'm not mistaken, I think the, I think we're talking the whole, everything. Lights down the main street and everything, because they're about as old as I am, I think. Those ones on Main are pretty old, aren't they? But across.
Yeah, I don't know if they've updated them at all in two hundred years.
I know that's been a discussion too, so we're just going to let you know that, you know, unless somebody else has some better thoughts for this. That instead of.
Well, I don't.
Trying to budget for it.
Well, see, the last time, and the previous mayor, we took it out of the budget. We're saying we're going to try to.
Yeah.
And I know we didn't give one donation.
Nothing's been donated yet.
Are you sure about that?
Positive, because we didn't do a resolution for a donation excepting as far as, if we, Jessica and I talked about that too, when they looked into it, and they haven't received, you know, they haven't received any donations that we know of for lights. So this would start a campaign if we decided, if it was, if the city can legally do it.
Probably check into that.
That's what we're checking into. I'm just saying to you, I update it.
I'm pretty sure that.
So how much money are we looking?
It was going to be a.
I don't remember. That's Kirby's got to get the exact numbers for completely.
Has somebody picked out what they want?
Not yet.
It's going to be at least 10 grand or more.
Yeah.
I think it was 16, wasn't it?
Probably. 16 if you include all the other lights, but that'd get them all LED too.
15 to 20,000.
Yeah, probably. But this would get people talking about it and that's why we put in the budget and levy for it, which I prefer not to do if we can.
Right. I would check. I know the chamber was going to donate some money and they were going to donate last year too for the first bingo.
Right, but I don't think there's any place, you know, there's no place to donate it to yet that just.
But you just donate to city, it doesn't manage use.
Right, but we, there's no resolution on file that has been done yet, so.
I still would check with the chamber, see if they donated money for that.
Right.
And we just.
Right, but if they donated money, we would have done a resolution for it, and there isn't one on file that was checked.
I still would check.
So that's where we're at on that. I think so. I'll have Kirby look into it again, give us some good numbers. Waiting for Jessica to let me know if the city can actually do it. And if that's the case, then we'll just kind of take it in our hands and try to hone this in.
I mean, that's where it was left at last time too.
Yeah, and I just don't want to leave it anymore. I want to keep going on this and, and I mean, they've been pulled down, they've been, they think they need some updating. So this, unless there's an organization out there that wants to take on a campaign and but.
Well, you know, I talked to some other businesses, there's businesses worth, that are considering donating money.
Right, so if we just get something going and, and a place for, you know, this way that we can get it going on it. Okay, so that's kind of an update on that. As soon as Jess gets, needs some information, then we'll just get started on it. We'll just do it.
Because we're, are we under miscellaneous?
We're under miscellaneous, so.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring up, I talked to Jessica about this. Lee reached out to me from North One Drive, and they are considering donating that well if we, you know, the city wants the well.
Okay.
So I told Jessica, she was going to put on the agenda, but I'm sure it would be in second stuff.
Yeah.
But so that's, I just want to note that, that they are offering that to donate to the city.
The well of the park?
Yeah.